Okay, the legislature is now back in session. We are still under motion. Senator Ray Tenorio, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 146 EC and 165 EC be placed at the bottom of the second reading.
On the motion to place those two bills on the bottom of the second reading file, any objection? 145 and 146, correct. Without objection, then so order. Senator Judy Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place several bills. I'll just go through the numbers.
Okay, let me just set some rules on this thing. Since we were having a lot of bills that will be, you know, given out, so can we just take care and in order of your motion, without any objection, be placed so that, you know, it won't be scattered all over your desks? Okay, so...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. But these bills that I would like to make motions to place them at the bottom of the second, on the reading file. They are Bill Number 33.
Bill Number 33.
Bill Number 47.
Bill Number 47.
Bill Number 49.
Bill Number 49.
Bill Number 109.
Bill Number 109.
Bill Number 139.
Bill 139.
Bill Number 106.
Bill 106.
Bill Number 115.
Bill 115.
Bill Number 116.
Bill 116.
And Bill Number 132.
Bill Number 132. Without objection, so order. So, can I have the Sergeant Adon to now set it up? So that we can be, can start discussing, but at the same time, place everything in order according to the motion that was made? Okay? We don't have anything on the, anything more in motion? None, okay. We have legislative concurrence, none. Consent calendar, none. Second reading file, we're on top of the second reading file. Senators Spalding... Where? Okay, the chair's corrected. I've got four, four, right Judy?
No, six, six. Huh? I come to six. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, five.
Okay, Senator Judy Wampat. On the confirmation of Peter Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place the appointment of Peter E. Gill on the voting file as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission.
Okay, on that motion, any objection? Without objection, so order.
I'd like to make a motion also to place Ms. Evelyn E. Angoko as a member of the Guam Public Library Board to be placed on the voting file.
On that motion, to place Evelyn E. Angoko as a member of the Guam Public Library Board on the voting file, any objection, without objection, so order.
I'd like to motion to place Ms. Sherry Lynn Wong as a member of the, to serve as a member of the Guam Public Library Board to be placed on the voting file.
On that motion, to place Sherry Lynn Wong on the voting file, without objection, so order.
I'd like to make a motion to place Mr. William Q. Sarmanto to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation Board also, and to be placed on the voting file.
And the nomination of William Sarmanto to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Telecommunication on the voting file, any objection, without objection, so order.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to place the nomination of Mr. Joseph B. Leongrill to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees on the voting file as well, and all of them to do confirm.
Okay, on that motion, okay, no objection, so order. Nothing anymore, huh? Okay, consent calendar, none. Senators Spalding, Bill Number 59.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill Number 59 EC into the third reading file.
Okay, on the motion, to place Bill Number 59 on the third reading file. The chair's been informed that Bill Number 59 has been reconsidered, and the reason that it is placed on the top of the second reading file is because it's been, the motion to reconsider passed in the other legislative day. And so, yes, Senator Pangilina, this is the motion to reconsider.
On the motion to, I just want to be very clear that the Bill 59 that's being reconsidered is the bill as amended on the floor, and that the bill reads at this time to change the zoning to commercial. And that is the bill that is on the floor, and the bill that is, the motion is, is...
Yes, the one I have right now is an active zone. The previously on zone lot numbers, 5328-5NEW-R2, 5328-R6, NEW-R2, and 5328-6, all in the municipality of the Additut to Commercial C Zone. Is that correct? Okay. On that motion, now to place Resolution Number 59. Senator Spalding.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to introduce a motion to change that designation from a C-zone to an M1-zone in Bill 51, uh, 59 EC.
Yes, the motion is to amend.
The motion is to amend.
Right. So your amendment is to...
My amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to just change the zoning designation from a commercial to an M1-zone, Mr. Speaker.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Okay, state your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess this also, if you can help me clarify. I understand that when this bill was being heard by the legislature, there was a motion to move it from M1 to commercial, and then subsequent to that, there was a reconsideration, and the reconsideration passed, and I'm wondering why this designation stands at commercial when I believe it should be M1?
No, it's not. It was passed, it was down in third reading. A motion was made by Senator Ben Pangilina. The speaker at the time accepted the fact, you know, that it's for the reconsideration, and that's why Bill Number 59, as recons considered, is placed now. And it, the new, the one that's being considered is the commercial zone from the second reading.
Oh, that was what the reconsideration motion at the time was? Okay, so...
So, yes, Senator Spalding is in order. Now, your amendment, Senator Spalding, is to change the title to from C on the commercial to...
To an M1-zone, Mr. Speaker.
To M1.
Yes.
So take off "commercial" and "C" dash "one"? Is that it?
Uh, yes, we place...
Okay, municipal to Additut to M dash "one" zone. This is for the title.
It would be in the title and also in Section 2, at the very last designation. I hereby zone to, it should read, again, I'm moving to amend it from "commercial" to "light industrial," M1-zone.
Okay, the motion that is being made is on the title itself. Delete "commercial", quote, parentheses, quote, "C", and instead, you know, insert "M dash "one". Any objection to that? Yes, Senator Ben Pangilina. There are two motion on this. Since we're talking about the same thing, the motion number one is the one on the title and on page two, on Section 2.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, I don't object to the bill that would zone this property as commercial. I do object to zoning this property as M1. And it really baffles me how we can go from one day accepting a commercial zone designation for this property and switch, you know, the next day and say, "We don't want it." What caused the consideration that occurred and the discussion that occurred to all of a sudden change? Why did this body and every member of this body basically accept this designated lot to be zoned from going to be unzoned to commercial? Or what did it, what caused this body to first reject? Reject the bill that would designate this property, M1, and accept designated as commercial? And then come right back and once again, change its mind and reconsider, and now go back to commercial, I mean, to M1? Why are we doing this, Mr. Speaker? In talking to my colleagues, I think the only, the only answer I can get is, "Because I promised." I promised that I was gonna move for M1. So when it got moved from M1 to Z, to C, they accepted that, but now they want to go back and say that I promised. What about the promise that you make to the people of Guam? What about that promise? Are we now governed by a single promise that we make to a single individual? And we're not gonna listen to the people of Guam on this matter? We're not gonna listen to other people that have come forth and said, "Be reasonable"? You know, Mr. Speaker, when this bill came up for a hearing, the purpose of asking for the zone was for the individual who owns this lot, who bought it from an ancestral lands owner, unzoned, because most federal lands that were returned were unzoned, was they wanted to move their current business operation to this new spot. And during the hearing, I asked, "Is there anything now that you are doing in your current business operation under a commercial zone that you can't do if you moved?" And the answer was, "No." I want to move my operations. I'm operating my business as a C-zone, and I can move my business as a C-zone. That made sense. Everybody told me it made sense. Even the author told me it made sense. But all of a sudden, all of a sudden, it doesn't make sense anymore. Why? Why doesn't it make sense anymore, Mr. Speaker? You know, during the time that we've had to consider our actions on this bill, I guess, you know, we've all gotten pressure. We've all gotten talked to. We've all gotten asked. But who are we listening to? You know, Mr. Speaker, we received some correspondence which are forwarded to the members of this body from the former chief planner of the Department of Land Management. Now, remember, this thing has not gone through scrutiny at all. None of the departments and agencies had a chance to review this, comment on it. One of the agencies that was at the hearing was concerned because, they actually expressed some concern because the lot is over the northern aquifer. And we really need to think about zoning M1 zones for large tracts of property over the northern aquifer. Do we want to risk it? Now, I know that the individual is a good businessman, is a conscientious businessman, and will not knowingly put the northern aquifer at risk. I know that. It still does not, to me, justify giving an M1-zone without further comment, review, and scrutiny for the activities that can occur as a permitted use without any further conditions over the northern aquifer. Remember, Mr. Speaker, that this body decided that we weren't going to allow people in the northern aquifer to have residential property that's smaller than a half acre. Why? Because smaller than a half acre with a leaching field places the northern aquifer at risk. One single house on a half acre with a sewer system and a leaching field, in the view of this body, EPA, and the other government departments and agencies says that it places the northern aquifer at risk. And that's the policy that we have. Now, without any additional input and any additional discussion, we're gonna zone acres and acres of property, M1. Why? Because we made a promise. We all make promises. But the biggest promise we made, Mr. Speaker, when we saw our hands on inauguration day, think about that promise. Think about the oath you took on that day. It wasn't a promise to one single individual or one single company or one single group. It was a promise to the people of Guam, the government of Guam. That's what we're doing here, Mr. Speaker. It really pains me to get up and argue in this manner because I thought, I thought that we had something reasonable. Everybody I talk to in here tells me it's reasonable. How did it become so unreasonable so quickly? How? Mr. Speaker, I'm bending over backwards. I think. Because I do support a C, because it places some restrictions, and when you want to increase the intensity of the activities on that, then you can go up. There is nothing to prevent the landowner from proceeding with relocating his business under a C-zone. Nothing to stop him because that's the zone that his business currently operates under. And if, if he feels that he just can't expand his business under a C-zone and needs an M1, then let's take the time. Let's take the time and let's take it through the process that would allow all the departments and agencies to see those activities, to place conditions if necessary on those activities so that we can protect Guam's only groundwater resource, the northern aquifer. We're not saying he can't have it. I'm just saying he shouldn't have it through this process. That going C is a large step of accommodation that this body is making. We're not hampering his business operations. We're not asking him to downzone and downgrade. We're just asking that if you want to increase the intensity, then let's take the time to have the proper departments and agencies review that, and let's be reasonable about it. That's all. That's all we're asking, and yet, this body says it doesn't, it doesn't care. It doesn't care. It doesn't care about the people of Guam. We pollute that northern aquifer, Mr. Speaker, and we're done for it. I'm not saying that this individual, this individual is probably the best individual that we can, we can give this to, but it just shouldn't happen this way. It just shouldn't, Mr. Speaker. We can't afford the risk. And it's no disrespect. Think about the promise you made to the people of Guam on inauguration day and weigh that promise against the promise you made that is causing you to change your mind on this. Not once, not twice, but gonna be the third time. Mr. Speaker, I implore my colleagues, I implore them. If you really, if you really believe that we're being reasonable, then act reasonable. And if you just want to tell me to make me feel good, then don't do it. Don't come up in front of my face and tell me, "Ben, you are reasonable. It's a reasonable thing," and then go on and do something unreasonable. Don't lie to me. Just come up and tell me, "I don't care what you think." Don't try to pacify me. And I think that's what I've been getting. Don't, just do what you want to do, and don't try to be nice. Don't try to be collegial. You think you're making me feel good? But it's not me I'm worried about. It's the people of Guam I'm worried about. Lie to me every day, but don't lie to the people of Guam. I'll be curious to see how many are as passionate about changing this from C to M1. I want to hear you get up in the middle of the day, in the light of the sun. I want to hear you get up and say why this is the right thing to do. Don't just sit there and then forget about your promise to the people of Guam. It's a bigger promise. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the passion that the previous speaker displayed. However, there are a couple of things, I think, that need to be brought out. First of all, when he says that we're changing our minds, and first of all, we should be concerned that this is over the northern aquifer, Mr. Speaker, his existing business has been in the community for about thirty years or more. His business is located up north, over in the northern aquifer. What he wants to do is move closer to what he believes may be the area where the military buildup may be. And may I point out also that the infrastructure is there. There is water, there is power, there is sewer. The utilities are there. So when we start talking about it, and again, the previous speaker did mention that this gentleman and this business is a very good business and a very good gentleman who's been very conscientious about our community. So I don't see him or the business going out with intent to try to not safeguard against perhaps polluting the northern aquifer, but to actually hook in to the utilities that are there so that he can mitigate any potential problems that the business might pose. But the reason why he asked, "Well, why are we from one day switching from a commercial zone to an M1-zone?" Oh, Mr. Speaker, if I may, after that, we did have communication with Department of Land Management on what would be the proper zoning for this kind of business. Now, this business is an equipment rental business. This business has been on this island, has helped our people, our community, through thick and thin, and especially during times of disaster. Especially after the typhoons, when our people needed the equipment to do what they had to do to make their lives right again. He has been there and he has rented out equipment. These pieces of equipment need to be repaired. They need to be maintained. Under a C-zone, we're not allowed to do that. This business is not allowed to do that. He should be allowed to, since he is in the business of renting out this equipment, so that he should be allowed to repair and maintain these facilities, excuse me, these vehicles, so that he can then rent it out to another needing family. So when we start talking about it, we did contact the land management on what would be the proper zoning. And after reviewing the type of businesses it's in, he, the Department of Land Management agrees. This, this type of commercial business should be designated and zoned in an M1 zoning. And that is why a C-zone does not fit this particular type of business. An M1-zone is the appropriate zoning for this. And this is why we have to move forward, because as we see this military develop, military buildup develop, we need to ensure that our local businessmen get first crack at the opportunities that they're gonna present themselves. And the proper designation for this particular type of business is an M1-zone. He has been operating, yes, under a C-zone. However, like I said, if I may remind you, as I just mentioned a few seconds ago, even the Department of Land Management says the proper zoning for this kind of business is M1. So it's not a matter of waffling. It's a matter of actually designating the proper zoning for this type of business so that he can move on, so that our businessmen, this one in particular, can move on and take advantage of what is coming down the road. So I do ask my colleagues to support this zone designation change from a commercial to an M1, because it is the proper zoning for this kind of business. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, on Bill Number 59 EC, as amended. Senator Judy Wampat. On the amendment made by Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think almost all of my colleagues here know that since the 23rd Guam Legislature is that my personal philosophy has been to not rezone or not even sell government properties for that matter. And that is a personal philosophy of mine. And the reason why it's not just a personal philosophy is because many times when the legislature is involved in rezoning, we do not have access to all the experts in the departments, all the departments and agencies, which normally would scrutinize any application that would go before the TLUC. On a personal experience, Mr. Speaker, is that I too wanted to rezone a piece of property of mine, and my colleagues all offered to do it the fastest, the easiest, and the cheapest way, and to avoid the process that one would normally have to go through a TLUC. This body created TLUC to scrutinize all rezonings, and I followed that process. Granted, it took me a whole year, but it was done. And it was done, of course, with every government entity involved to make sure that I was able to abide by the law and to make sure that I do not affect the neighbors, more importantly, of course, the environment. Now, I realize that this particular bill addresses a piece of property that has no zoning classification because, as stated earlier, is that this was a property that was returned by the military. And the owner of the property actually went through TLUC and was referred back to this legislature to get a zoning. For the past legislatures, I know that the speaker was seriously looking at all lands that were being returned to give it an agricultural zone, just to get it started, so that the individual landowners then can go through the process at TLUC. In this particular case, of course, is that it's not being given an agricultural zone because it is to be used now for an existing business. And where it's located, and I understand, of course, that there are neighboring activities there such as the fire department and the ambulance services, I think, and a precinct office. But we're talking about, basically, a totally different function of, other than just a police precinct or an ambulance or a fire department agencies in the area. What was mentioned here was that currently, yes, the property is in a commercial zone. What was mentioned here was that currently is, the property is in a commercial zone, it's been operating, and wants to continue to operate in the same manner, and the bill here is for C, and now we want to go to M1. The only thing I can think of is that there will be other things then that are being considered to be done for an M1, because when you think of M1, you're really talking about an industrial area. And there are other considerations that have not been addressed here in this bill. None of us have basically done that. We've not had the opportunity, the entire body or the public, to have the opportunity to be heard by Guam EPA to talk about the aquifers. We don't have anyone from D P W to talk about the egress and degress of, you know, vehicles and equipment in the area. We haven't gotten any reports from the fire department, for that matter. And then also, normally, when you go through the normal process, is that then you would take the surrounding areas at five hundred feet all the way around to see how it's going to impact the neighbors. And that was one of the things that I had suggested, that it take into consideration everything technically that T L U C would require, and actually go through that process, go through the motion of making sure then that there are no negative impact to the community. And I don't know if that, you know, was done. Mr. Speaker, I too, in this case, because it does not have a zone classification, is that I'm, as much as I don't like to vote for rezoning, like I said, but because it doesn't have a rezoning and the individual does not have any recourse but to come to this legislature, what seems reasonable to me, of course, considering what is going to be done, the activities that are going to be done, is that there will be noise pollution, there will be fumes, when you talk about the type of work that's involved, the gas spillage, oil, fuel, and all that, when you do repairs on equipment. I mean, we talk about even, we tell our citizens not to take the oil that they have extracted from their own cars when they're going to do an oil change, to just throw it on the side and have it then go into the environment, but that we need to turn it into the proper places for it to be properly disposed of. And what concerns me, of course, is that, you know, the primary water source for the entire island of Guam is up north. And I definitely was here, as one of the Speaker had mentioned, when we made that determination, when we made that a law, that if anyone is to build up north, anywhere near the aquifer, that yes, that it had to be at least half an acre. Unless, of course, you are hooked up to a sewage system. In the south, of course, we're not all, we're not all privileged to be a part of the sewage system, so therefore, all of our properties as well would have to be at half acre in order then to have leaching field and a septic tank in our properties. But when we are talking about the only single source that basically determines the livelihood of every individual who lives on this island, which is the water, then we need to do everything we can to protect it. Now, like I said earlier, that normally, I am not in favor of rezoning, but I feel that the most reasonable zone to actually apply for this particular property would be commercial. It would not prohibit the owner from going to T L U C later on, and then request for an upgrade, an upward rezoning. The difference is, when you start from the top, it's very difficult to go down. But it's much easier that as you build, as you progress, as you plan and expand, then that's when you start to also plan and expand in terms of having your property rezoned. I heard the same comments, Mr. Speaker, as we talked about this. This was a heated debate that we had during the budget hearing. And I too feel very uncomfortable with promises being made. I met with the owner, and he's a very good citizen of this community. His wife is also a relative, and I'm sure I'm gonna get flagged from this, but I have to do what's best for the entire island of Guam. And I didn't make a promise, but I had an open mind. And that's what I'm asking everyone here as well. Is that I know you've made some promises, and I think what would be best is, basically, to release yourself from that promise and uphold the promise, yes, that we will protect our environment and that we will protect the people of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Respeio, on the Espodown Amendment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, I rise in support of amending this bill from commercial to light industrial. And I wanna say that when the bill was first introduced, that is exactly what the designation called for, and that's why I raised the point of information, because I believe that there was an amendment made, and that passed, and then somehow there was a reconsideration. I'll tell you why there was a reconsideration on this amendment, because at the time we were hearing this bill, there was also a public hearing going on on the other side, and there were several members at that public hearing, myself included. Senator Lohan was having a hearing on GPA matters, and it was quite unruly to have to manage both that hearing and this session. And I believe there was even one point throughout that hearing when Senator Lohan asked me to chair his oversight hearing, and I felt a little uncomfortable, being a minority, having any leadership responsibilities with this current Republican-led legislature. And so we had to recess that hearing, come over, and vote for those reconsiderations. It's my contention, Mr. Speaker, that if we didn't have that hearing, and we were already part of that session that day, that motion to change that designation probably wouldn't have gone down so easily. So there's apparently an explanation as to why things happen, and believe it or not, there's sometimes justifications and methods to this madness we call the legislative process. I'm listening very intently to the comments made for and against this bill, and the comments of the previous Speaker that were not privy to any government advice or any government officials thinking on this matter. In the committee report, there's comments made by the planner of the Land Management that says the present land characteristics in the immediate area are agricultural. A rural agricultural use in the surrounding community is evenly distributed. Rural agricultural uses include private residential uses and subsistence farming activities. No light industrial activity exists in the immediate area. However, lots and they cite the lots in question about Route Three, a major arterialway leading to one of the fastest-growing communities on Guam. Does to support such communities, commercial activities would be conducive in these areas. Light industrial zones are the second highest-use intensity, allowing for a wide range of uses to include commercial activities. And the same individual, I believe, also provided some email correspondence to the Acting Speaker's office, and basically said, I'm sure the Acting Speaker will talk about this, but basically said to have a zoning designation of commercial would not be conducive or would not allow east-west rental to operate the kind of business activity is required in that neighborhood. So, you know, as a member of this legislature, Ms. Speaker, I also want to do the right thing and act responsible at all times, and just leave it to the people to decide whether or not my actions were in their best interest. We can only do our best to appeal to them and let them know that our actions are in their best interest, particularly if this amendment were to be passed to go from commercial back to M1, which is what the original zoning designation was in this bill. To be a part of this legislature and to say, "Let's just designate a commercial zone, and let's just have them go to the T L U C and get their proper designation after that", would be, I don't know, I don't know if I want to do that, because to rezone this commercial knowing exactly what kind of commercial activity is required for that area, and passing a bill that would be deficient, I don't think would suit our purpose here as this legislature convenes on Bill Fifty-Nine. So I rise in support of this designation, Mr. Speaker, and say that it's raw land right now. There are an abundant of kind of activities done on the northern aquifer. If this business moves in, obviously, they're gonna have to comply with the requirements of an M1 industrial. It's not like we're trying to rezone a property to do something after the fact, where you know that the building does not conform to that kind of zoning requirement. So this is very different indeed. I wanted to say that, as one of the previous Speaker pointed out, the individual who petitioned for this rezoning is acting in the utmost responsible manner, is acting in good faith, is trying to get the proper designation for his land up there in the northern area in Tedito before doing, building the building and trying to circumvent all the permitting requirements. And I'm absolutely certain that if they get this designation, they're gonna have to comply with the environmental regulations up in the north. So we have correspondence from the Department of Land Management saying that, from the chief planner, saying that the best use for that property is light industrial. And I believe that's what the original bill's intending to do.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker, that's not what that says.
It's in the committee report. I read it to you again.
Say that the best use of this property is light industrial?
It's a big...
Continue on, Senator Respeio.
Well, you can take it how you wanna read it, but I read it to say to support such communities, commercial activities would be conducive in these areas. So apparently, that's my reading of it. And if a member does have a different reading, then that's to their own interpretation. So again, I rise in support of the original, what the original bill was intending to do here, and that's to have that zoning designation, a light industrial. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Calvo, on the Espodown Amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr.
To make sure that we're in the right motion, that the commercial will be deleted, but light industrial, M dash one is parentheses, and that's on the title, as well as on page two, section two. Okay? Senator Calvo.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment proffered. In fact, I do recall, I was in the session hall a few weeks back when the amendment was made, and I remember motioning through facial gestures to the senator, who was the author of the bill, whether this would have any meaningful impact in, again, the purposes that were to be set forth. And I guess, obviously, things moved quick, and, again, the motion was made, there was no objection. But again, through discussions with the owners of the properties, it became very clear and evident that this business, this local business, who has been given an opportunity to make use of, again, formal ancestral lands, well, I don't know if it's ancestral lands property, but return properties to families, and being made for benefit of our local people, that he would be given that opportunity. It's interesting how we're fighting over whether it should be commercial or light industrial, knowing also full well that there are many regulations, and whether it's EPA or other agencies, both federal and local, that govern over properties and ensuring that folks that own properties and are developing properties and make use of properties fall within the guidelines of health, safety, and welfare of the people of Guam. If you can go back sixty years, and Senior Senator, Mr. Speaker, I think you were the only one around sixty years ago. But I'm so sorry. But if you can recall, the whole northern Guam was a giant military base. At one point, nineteen forty-five, I think we had half a million people, mostly soldiers, living in the island of Guam. Starting from central Guam moving north, you would have, again, whether it's Brewer Field Naval Air Station, the Harmon Field, you have the Army Air Force Annex, which I think is that particular piece of property, the N C S Northwestern Field, and Anderson Air Force Base. There was, it was one vast industrial complex, and there was no EPA to watch over the military back then as well. As we fight over whether it's gonna be an M1 or commercial, I hope we also recognize the fact that the largest fuel installation in the United States military is built in our northern Guam, right by our aquifer lands. My dear colleagues, unfortunately, or fortunately, the way you look at it, the military has downsized in the island of Guam, and they've had the ability with this downsizing to give properties back to the original landowners, and for those original landowners to make use of that property as they see fit, as long as they follow within the guidelines and rules, regulations, laws governing the United States and the territory of Guam. I do believe that the owner of the properties will abide by the law and comply with regulations and statutes, both local and federal, if he chooses to develop that property, which he does intend to exercise. My colleagues, I'm asking you to support this amendment. We believe it's an opportunity for the owners of these properties to make a better life for themselves, make a better life for the people of Guam. In the next few months or years, we're gonna have many big businesses coming in from Japan and from the United States. I'd be, I'm very concerned about how things will be moving forward over the next ten years to make sure that our people, the people of Guam, aren't marginalized. Here's an opportunity for, again, a local family business to succeed and to advance. And with that, I wish we could go through T L U C, but unfortunately, you can't because there is no zone designation in this. This is under the purview of the legislature. So I'm asking my colleagues to take to take advantage of, again, their responsibilities and the mandates of a legislature, which is, again, to designate a zoning, a new zoning for this property. I'm asking them to support the amendment for L1 light industrial, and also for the passage of the bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Palacios, on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. In fact, the amendment is reflective of the original bill which I had before me. And I'd like to point out at this point that I remember in the Twentieth Guam Legislature, when this body considered and eventually passed into law designating a certain property as M1. This is a property across the Bangor, Hawaii, the Upper Tumon, the corner turning into Tulava's Point on Route One. That whole property there, that's owned by the Prestige Auto. I think at that time, of course, the main consideration here is, here we are, this body would try and facilitate, of course, economic growth, and that was emphasized at that point. And while the current location for the, I guess, the property owner who's requesting for M1, where they are now, they rented out equipment, but had this equipment being used as opposed to being rented, it would, of course, fit in properly with M1. However, I guess, there are repairs done to this equipment that are being rented, and they're not necessarily being used to benefit the business owner, but as a rental. And it is my understanding when this was heard earlier this year that there is an intention to expand and include, I guess, a heightened activity there, right there on Route Three. And that's where really this one, this property is. It abuts Route Three. Again, that whole area, I guess, being the Prestige Auto is just in the general vicinity. I feel comfortable that, I guess, there's enough safeguard existing right now to make sure, of course, that there are mitigations taken care of and addressed, so that this expansion of this business would, of course, would not harm, I guess, whatever the environment and, I guess, the interests of the people of Guam. guess, whatever the environment and, I guess, the, the interest of the people of Guam. And for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I, I support the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Louha, on the Espodón Amendment.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of, of this bill. As the previous speaker had, had mentioned, the fact remains that in the last legislature, on twenty-eighth Guam Legislature, this body also had deliberated and passed into law a rezoning that would allow Prestige Auto to be able to have another location, the property that they, they had bought again from returned lands. And they had exhausted all measures to be able to, to, to zone their properties. They, again, all exhausted measures were, were undertaken. And their last measure was to, to come to legislation because of the fact that there was no zoning and that the TLC was, in fact, tasked with rezoning. And at that point, again, the operations, or continues to be the operations of Prestige Auto, that because of the fact that they do service vehicles and change oil of that nature, that they will, that their zoning would have to be, instead of commercial, that they would have to be a, a light industrial in the form of, of an M-one. Now, they went through extensive questioning in regards to that designation because of the fact that we were also concerned of, of the, the aquifer and, and the ruining of the aquifer itself because of the oil and things like that. And we asked at that time also, have there any, been any citations brought upon that company at, at that time? There were zero citations as well regarding that. Mr. Speaker, this company has been in business now for thirty-five, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this, this year, they'll be celebrating their thirty-fifth anniversary of doing business here on Guam. This business also has a zero record of, of citations in regards to, to environmental concerns or things of that nature. Knowing, again, that if, if this passes, they would have to adhere to all laws, rules, and regulations that govern, again, what is, is allowed to be, to be built there and, and whatever it is the business that they undertake. You know, it's ironic, Mr. Speaker, as we sit here and deliberate this, this bill here in regards to our local businesses. Again, as we, as we deliberate on this, we have simultaneously going on in one of the hotels is a, is a Department of Interior conference in which we have, I don't know how many nations and how many leaders that are out here in regards to look into, to opportunities, business opportunities here in Guam, that, of course, the bottom line is not necessarily watching out for the people of Guam, but also watching out for their bottom dollar. We have a company that's here today, that's been here for thirty-five years, and I'm sure over the past years have been under the scrutiny of, of Reverend Tax, to be able to pay his taxes upfront, to be able, and, and wherever he swings, he has to be able to be under that scrutiny. The unfortunate thing is, is companies that, that have or doing business most, most exclusively with, with the federal government, that in some instances, they, they, they don't fall under that, that we have to seek out, we even have to seek out the, the assistance of the, the delegate to be able to make sure that they're in compliance with business licenses and tax collections, income taxes, and, and, and all that. And as we sit here as well, deliberating this bill, how many of us are down there in this conference saying that each and every one of you, before you come into Guam, we need to make sure that you are in full compliance of Guam laws, and you have to pay your taxes, you have to be, you have to adhere to all rules and regulations? Mr. Speaker, a few weeks ago, we, we find that, again, that we have companies that we're doing with, doing business with, in particular with, with a fuel contract, that may be subjected to income taxes, are exempted from fuel taxes, but exempted from fuel taxes, that is, that transfer is done here in Guam. Now Reverend Tax, I have complete, I, I, I'm comfort that they are pursuing this because of the fact that they may owe us hundreds, thousands, if not millions of dollars in income taxes that, that, that may be, may be owed to the people of Guam. Now, that's, remains to be seen. But, Mr. Speaker, again, the bottom line is, we have a good business citizen that has been a good business citizen, been in compliance with all of Guam's laws, rules, and regulations in doing business, but not only that, but as a good citizen to be able to, to do that. President has been set in being able to do business here in Guam. And I'm sure, just like anybody else in this body, if this business is not in compliance, this body will be, will be, you know, at, at their doorstep to make sure that, that we make, that they are in full compliance. And if not, they would have to, to answer to the full extent of the law, if not, if they're not adherents to that. You know, it just baffles me, again, how we welcome people from all over, come in and do business with us, come in and do business with us. Please, exploit the opportunities you have here in Guam. We have local businesses that wanna continue to do business in Guam, employ local employees, pay local taxes, income taxes, subjected to these bodies devastation of tax increases and fee increases, yet when they wanna expand, if they wanna expand, we say you are a bad citizen. And you know what? I, I just can't, it, you know, it just baffles me that a good citizen, you have to come down to this legislature to turn that good a citizen into a bad law, non-law-abiding citizen with that. But with, with that, Mr. Speaker, I just say I am full support. I don't think that this company will put thirty-five years in good business practices in jeopardy just to get a designation that the Department of Land Management has, says that, that the, you know, the correct, telling us the correct, the correct designation for what is going to be occurring in that property legislature, you got it wrong. It's not C, it's M-one, you should do it as, as that. And again, they're, they continue for the past thirty-five years, continue to be subjected to the laws, rules, and regulations of Guam laws. I, I seriously doubt it. I'm willing to bet my last dollar that they will continue to adhere to that and not subject themselves, again, to be in non-compliance of Guam laws, rules, and regulations. Although, they're subjected to these bodies devastation in, in fee and tax increases. That's, that's the concern that I have, Mr. Speaker. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I wanna say that, that I have full support of, of, of the Espodón Amendment. And I, I'm proud to say that I'm a co-sponsor of this bill as well. Thank you.
Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't feel compelled to repeat the points that my colleagues who have risen in support of this amendment have already raised, because I think they've articulated those points adequately. But I do think, I try to put myself in the shoes that one of our colleagues had referenced earlier, in so far as being responsible to our island. And what would we do to those people that we promised, when we took a vow at the time of our inauguration to conduct ourselves in such a fashion that was to the benefit of the entire people of Guam? And when I think about that in every decision I make, I always put myself in the shoes of the person who's advocating a certain position where they're be a member of this body or a member of our community. And I think about whether or not what they're trying to achieve is in the best interest of our island. And I think of the individual, of course, and the history that he has on the island or in other walks of life, whether in business or industry or government, whether his points are salient and whether or not they have relevance to our island. And the reason I say that, Mr. Speaker, is that it's important for me to consider the fact that the gentlemen and the people that are associated with the business, whose families live on this island, whose children rely, just like yours and I, on the water that comes from our aquifer, who also consider the livelihood of their own families and their own coworkers, ought to consider when they're conducting their business. Are they putting themselves in jeopardy? Am I, by virtue of this, putting all of the island in jeopardy by classifying an area to be used for this business as M-one versus commercial? I don't think so. And the reason I don't think so is because I have trust and confidence in our government, although I know that we have improvements to make. We do have certain processes in place, and we also have individuals who have to comply with those laws. We're zoning. We're not giving an exception to requirements that are bestowed upon businesses who operate under a commercial or industrial or light industrial setting. We're simply saying that the proper designation for this property is M-one based on the information that we've received thus far. And as a result of that, we're making a decision because it is our responsibility to do so. And I understand the passion, and I appreciate that, because we all have to live here. And the impact of our economic growth through the military and other businesses has always been, like in other jurisdictions, at issue with the environment. And how are we going to have and what detrimental impact it might have on our environment? And I propose that the gentlemen and the businesses that are looking to try to change this designation are not trying to do it to the detriment of our island or to the aquifer or to the people of Guam or to any person in this room. They are here to try to make a viable business more viable, to try to stand up and make their business grow, to provide better services for our island. And regardless whether it's this entity or any other, or the individual or any other, we have to, as much as possible, look at the merit of it. And again, look at their history. I think that this is appropriate. They requested in the beginning for M-one as they knew it was such the proper designation for their type of business enterprise. And I don't believe right now, nor do I believe in the past or in the future, that this individual or this business is going to do something which is gonna have far-reaching, long-lasting detrimental effects on any person on this island, because they all know that we have invested interest in making sure that we protect our people and that our government is doing what they should be doing to make sure they protect our people as well. So I appreciate the sentiments of the mover of this amendment. I understand and support of it. I appreciate also the sentiments of those persons opposed to it. And I, I do understand that this is a difficult thing, but we have to take it upon ourselves. This matters before us and is appropriate for us to zone this M-one as opposed to commercial. And if there is any infraction or violation of our laws that shows that this business is violating anything that would possibly be a detriment to any person on this island by virtue of environmental impact, then I hope, and I pray, and I charge that those agencies in our government will make sure that that stops. But I do not believe that's the case today, and I don't believe that's gonna be the case in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, before I recognize the last speaker, do you have any other, any other senator that wants to speak on the, on the motion? Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
Mrs. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to point for the record that I rise in full support of the amendment. And I say that even knowing that as a policymaker and one who wants to continue to protect and preserve, and know that what the waters that we have within our island are probably the most precious resources that Guam has to offer. Mr. Speaker, as, as I was looking over this bill and before the family and members had come to me and asked to carefully look at this designation, concerns were brought up about the northern aquifers and, and their intent. And it was committed by, by, by the family that they were very much aware, the, aware of where this property sits today and that they knew that this property sits within the northern lands. And therefore, they would work closely with the government entities to make sure that as they move forward, that they will follow the EPA laws. And you know, Mr. Speaker, I'm, I'm going to have to believe that, especially coming from this local family who's been here for many, 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 many years, and as, as noted earlier, over three decades. And I've got to believe in his heart that as we look into expansion of the military influx here to our island, and as we look into our community continuing to grow, it, it is my belief in my heart that I know that this family's gonna do good for Guam, is gonna be able to give more opportunities to our people, to expand on the job of opportunities here, but also to know that they will safeguard and protect the property that will be utilized. So, Mr. Mr. Speaker, I too respect the comments that came from the speakers, the speakers who opposed this amendment, but I have to believe in my heart that this, that this amendment and that this move forward for this business will be in the best interest of our community as a whole, to be able to provide that opportunity, knowing that the safeguards will be in place and that the government will continue to make sure that the rules and regulations that govern the protections of our island will be protected. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this amendment.
Okay, Senator Espodón, do you want to close?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. A lot has been said, and I don't think we have to elaborate further. But one thought did cross my mind as I was sitting here listening to everybody, and of course, even listening very intently on, on the speakers who opposed this measure. And that had to do with M-one zoning of the northern aquifer. And I, I thought to myself, well, where is most of the M-one zoning on this island? I mean, first of all, I think we have to understand that basically the whole northern part of the island, starting from Talampago all the way to Anderson, is where the northern, underneath sits the, the aquifer. And if you think about where all our M-one zoning is, it's, for the most part, the majority is in Harmon, in Dedido, in other areas over the northern aquifer. So, again, when we start talking about this particular piece, it's not as though we're putting something out of the ordinary, you know, in terms of designation of, of zoning. All we're saying is we're allowing this particular property to be able to operate a light industrial business as, which is what their business is, in an area that already has so many other light industrial zoned areas. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to encourage my colleagues, and I thank them for the support, and I, I'm looking forward to, to their vote. Thank you.
Okay, on the Espodón Amendment, as many as, to place it down in third reading, okay? On the amendment Espodón, as many as are in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion pass. On the bill to be placed in third reading, any objection then? Just one objection? No, any other objection? Bill number fifty-nine is in third reading. Bill number thirty-four.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill number thirty-four EC be placed in third reading. Would like to speak on the motion. No, it's in the original version.
Okay. On the motion, the Tenorio's motion to place Bill number thirty-four EC in third reading. Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to ask the body's support and, of course, any, anything that may improve the bill in its existing condition to, basically, Mr. Speaker, this enhances several different provisions of Title sixteen Guam Code annotated with increasing the heights and also weight of vehicles and loads. It also grants the Department of Motor Carrier officials the authority to issue citations. Currently, they do many inspections of our vehicles that are out on the road. It also increases penalties for violations of the motor vehicle code. Mr. Speaker, I worked in concert with the Chamber of Commerce and, of course, the, the transportation community with respect to this bill in trying to enhance and bring up to current some of the standards which our transportation industry across our nation- some of the standards which our transportation industry across our nation has been, i- is basically changed and we have effectively remained constant. The original bill and some evolutions of it were passed many, many years ago. Basically, Mr. Speaker, the work that has been done thus far, in short, allows for vehicles of certain tonnage to be driven in, other than the left-hand lane, in two and three-lane roads, except in certain conditions such as passing, or making a left turn, or things of that nature. And the reason for that is, in many of our three-lane roads and even two-lane roads, which are designated as primary roads, which is a term of art, um, not a term of art, but a term that's used by many other jurisdictions who receive federal funding, basically designates primary and non-primary roads. And these roads, for example, Marine Corps Drive, have certain standards. One of the standards, Mr. Speaker, is that the weight, I'm sorry, the weight that is on these vehicles is such that it causes a substantial amount of damage that has, our roads have basically not been maintained in many areas. And this also puts the, not just the vehicles, but also pedestrians in danger because there, if you, if you go over these ruts and you go over the, the drains, the storm drains on the right-hand side, or that you find that the roads are narrow in many sections of the highway from Anderson all the way down to Naval Station, and many other, the other numbered roads on Guam, basically presents a hazard. Because these, these vehicles are such weight, as we've seen in the past, that if they exceed the weight, their ability to brake and their ability to maneuver and negotiate turns is severely compromised. Many sections of our roads still need to be brought up to standard and as we know, with the financing from year to year that come from our federal government, it's not able to do and maintain them to the level that we should be. Also, Mr. Speaker, many of the people that work in the transportation community have told me, and as a police officer for many years, I am in agreement that your ability to be able to maneuver and work through the traffic, both on your left and right-hand side, is best when you're going down a road that you don't have to stop all the time. You can see through your right-side view mirrors, you can see through your left-side view mirrors, and you can basically maneuver a lot easier than if you're working from the far-right-hand lane. So basically, this allows for those changes. And on primary road, which is the definition incorporated under Title 16, which is a new designation, as well as the subsequent page, secondary road, again, this is in conformity with many other statutes that deal with United States federal transportation and the highway money that comes as a result of that. Also, if you find on page four, this also changes the height and vehicle, height of vehicles and loads, which changes from thirteen feet six inches to fourteen feet for secondary roads and for fifteen feet for primary roads. Again, this is to be in concert with the industry standards and also prevailing transportation widths. And then the subsequent section five does exactly what I had originally mentioned, which also empowers the Department of Motor Carrier inspectors to be able to issue citations and do some of the things that only certain members of our law enforcement community can currently conduct. On section six, penalties, we've expanded the penalties, Mr. Speaker, to not just speak to the individual, because currently it says every person convicted of a violation, et cetera, has a certain penalty. The, the transportation community here on Guam, and of course, in other places as well, along with our Chamber of Commerce believes, as I do, that we should not just hold the individual, not just the operator, but the entity, the organization that is responsible for violations, also culpable and responsible for these violations. And then in subsequent pages, Mr. Speaker, you'll find that these fees have gone up substantially. The original fee was twenty-five dollars. Now we're looking at the first conviction to go up to five hundred dollars for the violation, and twenty-five cents per pound over the maximum allowable load, as authorized in fifty-one oh seven of Title 16. Mr. Speaker, I think this is exactly what's needed. We need to create a true deterrent. And when an individual is operating this vehicle, we can't simply hold them responsible because in some cases, they had nothing to do with the loading of that vehicle. We're also holding the feet to the fire of those businesses who are, who are violating the law knowingly. That means if you load the vehicle, if you're an employee, if you're a owner of this business, which is intentionally violating the law, you have responsibility to this, to this community. Because we have seen already, Mr. Speaker, there have been people killed on our roadways as a result of people who have not complied with the law. Further, Mr. Speaker, there also, it also changes the subsequent sections going up to one thousand dollars for the, I believe it's the fourth offense. And, Mr. Speaker, on the following section C, under one, two, three, and four, it again expands further on enhancing, what I think is an important part, is the culpability. That any importer, consignee, whether an individual or an entity, organization or company, whose shipping container placed under seal has been determined to be in violation of the same loads that we have in our code, this part shall be responsible for any fine, penalty, handling, additional transportation, or other associated costs, including storage. And the same language is extended to export, import, shipping containers under seal, as well as local containers under seal, and all other local transports under seal. Mr. Speaker, the, there is an effective date that the amendments here in shall be effective upon the date of enactment because I think it's important for us to immediately begin this process of holding not just higher standards, but higher penalties, and to hold, to also empower transportation community to make sure that they're not putting other vehicles and pedestrians in jeopardy because they're forced to stay in the right-hand side of the roadway, where we realize that not only from the Guam Police, Department of Public Works, but also the Chamber of Commerce and those involved in transportation every day, understand that that's a very, very dangerous place to be in many sections of the road on our island. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask for my colleagues to please consider this and support this bill. I do have an amendment which is more technical in nature toward the back, on page seven. On line seven, and I'll put this in writing, but on line seven where it says toward the end, "over the maximum allowable load authorized in section fifty-one oh seven", that, those terms to be inserted in two spots. On page, I'm sorry, line nine, on the same section, at the end of pound, and then again on line fifteen, at the end of pound, which is the fourth and the last word. So again, to repeat, "over the maximum allowable load authorized in fifty-one oh seven", to be placed after the word pound on line nine, which is the third to the last word, and then again on line fifteen, which is the fourth to the last word. And, Mr. Speaker, the reason for this is I think it may have been an oversight on my part, but the application of the fine is not simply the five hundred dollars, but in the first offense and the second offense, it's twenty-five cents per pound over the maximum allowable load authorized in, in our law.
Okay, Senator Tenorio, we'll, I'll go for recess and put it down in writing.
That's fine.
Because your amendment is rather complicated, and so in order for it, for us to follow, you need to put it down in writing. Thank you. So we'll be, we'll be in recess until you get your amendment going. Say you're making reference to page seven, right, of the bill?
Yes.
Okay, page seven, and li- on lines, on line seven. What are you going to do?
So, the language, "over the maximum allowable authorized in section fifty-one oh seven", those terms will be placed on line nine after the word pound, and again, the same language after the word pound on line fifteen.
And does everybody follows on the amendment? Page seven, line seven. And, okay, any objections to that? No objections? So ordered. Senator Tenorio.
Mr. Speaker, I also want to make one minor correction, which I should have caught before, and, and which was a problem with the previous legislation that was introduced, and was in part, some of the genesis from which this bill basically made it through my committee. And on page two, section two, line eighteen, so again, that's page two, section two, line eighteen, strike the last two words, "or reasonable".
Page two?
Line two. I'm sorry, line eighteen, section two, on line eighteen. Strike or reasonable. Because, Mr. Speaker, the reason for this is that reasonable according to whom?
Wait, 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 wait. Your amendment is applicable, you want it to delete "or reasonable"?
Correct.
Okay, and put a period after permissible?
That's right.
Okay, so, okay, on the amendment to take out on line eighteen, section two, "or reasonable", any objection? Okay, no objection, so ordered. Okay, on the bill as amended.
One, one final amendment.
Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask my good friend and colleague, Senator Espishu, to be added to the list of co-sponsors as he has worked with due diligence to try to also see many of these matters also addressed during prior legislatures. And so I'd ask my colleagues to allow him to be one of the primary contributors.
Any objection having Senator Espishu to be the third co-sponsor? Okay, without objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the bill as amended, Senator Palacios. Okay, on Senator Wumpet.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, um, okay, I just want to make sure that we have eight, you know, at least eight in here because I have an amendment and I, I wanted to pass. So, Mr. Speaker, um, I, you know, I attended the, the public hearing and, you know, there were some, some concerns as well that were brought, you know, forward. And, and one particular one that, that several of my colleagues and even one of the individuals, Mr. Butler himself, who testified for MAC Trucking and Transportation Subcommittee for the Guam Chamber of Commerce. And that, and that is basically in reference to the fees that are going to, or fines that are going to be collected from anyone who violates the law. And, and on page seven, I would like to make an amendment, line seventeen and eighteen, where it says basically that the fees and fines will be deposited into the territorial highway. So I would like to delete that and to replace it with the Better Public Service Fund at the Department of Revenue Taxation to be used by the Division of Motor Carrier. It was stated earlier that some, many times that it was difficult or to enforce the law for lack of, of funding and lack of manpower. And, and I believe then that by having the, the funds go into this particular fund, that it would help him support the manpower and resources that are needed to enforce the law. Many times we pass legislations and, and rarely do we even ever support it really, you know, with any resources and just hope that eventually they'll be able to do it, just because it's mandated by law. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, any objection to the Wumpet's amendment? Without objections, so ordered. So on the bill as amended, further amended, to be placed in third reading. Okay, without objection, so ordered. Bill number thirty-four EC as amended is down in third reading. Okay, we're on bill number thirty-nine. Senator Palacios, you're the second co-sponsor of the bill, would you like to? Senator Palacios, bill number thirty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to place bill thirty-nine on, on third, third reading.
An emotion made is to place number thirty-nine EC in third reading. Senator Palacios, you still recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this bill proposes, of course, to establish a process by which there can be at least a minimal guarantee of smooth transition from the outgoing incumbent of an elected office with the incoming, we have seen in the past at the mayor's level, at the Attorney General's office, where really there is just no cooperation and in the end, the people of Guam suffers because when there's no transition, then there is, there is confusion, you know, for the incoming incumbent. And I, I would think that probably this would not be necessary, but based on experience in the past, I, I, I feel at this point, with the primary audit that we should at least establish a minimal requirements and by which, again, an incumbent, outgoing elected official be actually, I guess, required to, to collaborate with the incoming elected replacement so that there can be, again, some kind of, of transition to allow for the incoming to, I guess, just fit in and, and resume as if with very minimal interruption to the service of, to the service, or rather for the service of, of the people of Guam. And this is, this is all that this bill actually proposes to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it, it involves, of course, all the elected offices. Of course, not the legislature, but that does not mean that it, it's just that it, it, it addresses with the mayors, the mayor and the Attorney General's office and the OPA's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the, on the motion to place bill number thirty-nine in third reading, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you. I just want to rise briefly in a matter of support for my good colleague, both the primary and of course, Senator Palacios, who has moved the bill. I think this is, this is an effort for our government to try to see that the information that is germane and of course, the assets that are available to an incumbent who may either not seek reelection or ultimately does not win the nomination for, to succeed him or herself, makes, again, as the, the good gentleman retiring speaker just mentioned, makes a transition for that information and makes certain responsibilities clear. That we want to have the ability for the future Attorney General and the future public auditor to be able to have that information and to be able to do so in a ethical and responsible way. And I applaud the gentleman for his, his efforts along with the primary mover of the bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the motion to place it in third reading, Senator Pinglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly support the, the intention of the bill and as, as the good senator said, that it's kind of a shame that we have to have a bill for this purpose. Because isn't it the right thing to do to just ensure that your successor has access to the office and to the records to ensure that they can come in there, assume the office and the responsibilities, and begin to work on behalf of the interests of the people of Guam as, as they come into office? But as he has said, practice has shown us that you can't assume that that's what happened. The one thing that I wanted to, I noted a difference though is that in the transition for the mayor's office, that we're saying that the mayor can't transfer property, equipment, documents belonging to the office shall now be transferred to any government agency. And yet, we don't hold that same restriction to the Attorney General and the public auditor. And I don't understand why the distinction. Are we saying that mayors are worse violators, less trustworthy, and so forth? Better quality of candidates for public auditor? We're saying that the public auditor candidates also need to be governed by a transition language and some parameters have to be set that govern their behavior. But we're not placing the same restrictions that we are on the mayors. So I would like to make an amendment that that same language be included in transition of the public auditor, section two, and transition of the Attorney General, section three, that that same language be added at the end of those sections that would also say. say, um, that should an incumbent auditor, uh, not be successful in an election, all property, equipment, documents belonging to the office shall not be transferred to any other given government agency. And that same language be repeated in the Attorney General's section and say, should an incumbent Attorney General not be successful in an election, all property, equipment and documents belonging to the office shall not be transferred to any government agency. And I'll be happy to put that in writing.
I'll be happy to accommodate you to, so, recess. Pingelinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the amendment would have on page two, line ten, after the word transition, which is basically the end of that sentence, add a new sentence and it would read, should an incumbent public auditor not be successful in an election, all property, equipment and documents belonging to the office shall not be transferred to any other government office. And then the second amendment, which is basically the same, would be, uh, insert the same, uh, land sentence, except it would read Attorney General instead of public auditor on page five or page three, uh, after that sentence there. So it would be to add a new sentence on page three, line one, I believe. After the word transition, you would then just add, um, should an incumbent Attorney General not be successful in an election, all property, equipment and document belonging to the office shall not be transferred to any other government, uh, office.
Okay, on the Pingelinen's amendment. We've had objection, so ordered. On bill thirty-nine as amended, to be placed in third reading. We've had objection, then so ordered. Bill number forty-one, Senator Palacios.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that bill forty-one EC as introduced, uh, be accepted.
Okay, the, there's no substituted version, right?
No substituted version, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, the motion is to place it in third reading.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I further move that, uh, bill forty-one EC be placed on third reading for purposes of discussion. And I would like to make a presentation, may I? Uh, Mr. Speaker, the current law provides for in-house, early, I mean, in-office, early voting, uh, at the Guam Election Commission, thirty days in advance. I found that out yesterday. On the condition, of course, that the voter would not be in Guam on Election Day or for some reason would not be available to, to vote on Election Day. And, of course, this can be done within thirty days from Election Day. But in doing so, one must first, of course, fill out a standard affidavit form and execute such form. In other words, there has to be a, an excuse, a very reasonable excuse, uh, in order for you to, for, for a voter, a registered voter to be allowed to vote. Now, this bill proposes, of course, to authorize, uh, in-office, early voting, the same thirty days, except that, uh, there be no excuse required. And, uh, through my research, right now, there are several states in the United States right now, Arkansas, Arizona, California, Colorado, Hawaii, South Dakota, Oklahoma, Indiana, that now allow for in-office, early voting. Uh, they vary in, in days, fourteen days, twenty days like that. And actually, the, the, there's no difference, uh, from the current practice here in Guam, except the, that the, that they, there did not be any excuse other than a person is registered to vote, he can actually vote on Election Day, but he, if this person chooses to vote early, then this bill would allow to do so. And it will enable, of course, employees and disabled individuals to cast their votes at their convenience at the Guam Election Commission office, of course, during normal working hours. And it would ease congestion on Election Days. Election Day now being not a holiday, uh, it would, it would also enhance, of course, voter participation in making voting a simple, easy process and, and, and convenient. And, of course, ballot so cast are to be maintained in the same manner, safeguarded in the same manner as absentee ballot or in, in-office ballot as being practiced right now. There, there's no change in, in any of the process other than one need not fill out this, maybe a, a regular standard form just to, to record that such a person already voted, but need not, I mean, any excuse. I mean, if there's still excuse to be required, then, I guess, just excuse that, well, I just want to vote early and, and I, I would not be able to work on that day, I mean, to vote on that day. And this is, uh, an idea that perhaps might maybe can increase voter participation. That's, that's the idea. Otherwise, it's, uh, it, it does not change the substance of, of the voting process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the Palacios bill, bill number forty-one, Senator Judy Wumpet.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I mean, I, I do support, uh, this idea, of course, of allowing people to come in at their convenience, basically to, to vote because, because many times what happens is that it's very difficult for people to actually get away from work and, uh, during Election Days. And one of the hardest, of course, as we all know, would be for those in the private sector. And the only time to do this would be either at lunchtime or right after work. And most of the time, you know, they are at flex time as well, so it's very difficult and they go beyond even, uh, the actual hours in which, uh, the times have been set to accommodate the, uh, the voters. Uh, the only thing, of course, is that, uh, I'm just thinking now, is that many times candidates have a, um, a wonderful time, basically, uh, actually being out there, you know, just having fun, trying to, to meet and interact with people. And then that may lessen the number of people who are going to be out there. But what really counts, of course, is the convenience of, uh, the voters. Uh, the one concern I do have, however, on page three, uh, which is on line twenty, that actually basically gives a timeframe in which the individuals can vote not more than thirty days. And my concern, and maybe I can ask the question if, is whether, um, on the average, normally, are, are the ballots ready within that timeframe? Because, I mean, I know it maybe will force them to, to make sure then that the ballots are all printed and ready to go, uh, you know, within, you know, that thirty-day period? Or should this be something that as soon maybe as they're, they're made available? So would the author be willing to answer that question?
Will you hear us, Senator Palacios?
Uh, during my, uh, my communication with the Guam Election Commission, the thirty day would, would guarantee, of course, that a ballot would, would be available simply because the, the current statute right now, the absentee ballot, absent, would be available for absentee ballots mailing out and for those that wanted to vote early because they're leaving off island. Uh, they, that's what I found. So that's why, uh, the thirty day. I, I think the, again, the only difference here is that instead of, of, of giving an excuse, the, of whatever reason, that actually no excuse may, may be required in this instance. Otherwise, it would be the same thirty days and the ballot would have been ready anyway, even without this bill, uh, passing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think that's, um, that's excellent. I'm glad, uh, to hear that. I think that the best part really of this bill as well is that the mere fact that you really don't have to give any excuses. I remember one time when I had to do this and I had to bring in my, uh, my ticket to actually so, show that I would be off island at that particular time. And then I remember one time I wanted to vote also earlier and I couldn't because I was pregnant and I gave birth on the morning of Election Day, so I didn't vote. So I think this is an, uh, an excellent opportunity for anyone, basically, no matter what their excuses are, so long as we can get greater participation, uh, of, you know, the citizens to come out and vote. So I do support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Pingelinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I certainly, um, have looked at the trend in voting and, uh, it really has been alarming, if you look at it over the last three election cycles, that we've really had a, I say, uh, historical decline in participation on Election Day. And we kind of theorize when we look at those numbers and, oh, this is an off-gubernatorial year, so voter, uh, participation is down or, or such. But we've looked at them over two or three gubernatorial cycles and we still have seen really a, a large decline in the percentage of voters participating. And we try to kind of figure out why. Why is it that people aren't responding? Uh, maybe it's the quality of the candidates, you know, and, and, uh, and they just are not interested and nobody's motivated anymore. Uh, maybe it's the fact that, uh, uh, the legislature has cut down in size and we just don't offer as many jobs as we do used to in terms of having available positions within our offices. I, for one, have three people in my office and one of them's part-time. So the motivation for some people to participate in that process is gone. For whatever reason, we have seen a continual decline and we need to search for ways to entice greater participation other than good citizenship. Because that's the fundamental motivation that anybody really needs that, in order to participate in an election process. It's good citizenship demands, requires that you participate in the election process in order to ensure that you get the government that you want. Uh, and we have seen a decline in that. I think the last election cycle, we were down in the seventy percent range. Where historically, we've had elections in the ninety percent range, ninety-two, nine percent participation. And to go from ninety-two to seventy-eight i- is indeed alarming. Even though we look at other communities, what have other communities done? Because other communities, when you look at their participation rates, you're talking thirty-eight percent of the entire voting public come out and vote. I think Hawaii's participation rate in the last election was something less than fifty percent. Somewhere in that neighborhood of thirty-eight to forty-eight percent of the actual eligible voters voted. And we have to take a look at what are we doing? One of the things that I think we've done is we take people off the election votes when they miss voting two, two elections in a row. Now, I think people, once they get off, it's harder to bring them back on. So we want to know, why did we do that? What was the trade-off between requiring people to come in and re-register after not voting for two consecutive years versus having them re-register? What was the trade-off in, when we made that decision? I don't know. One thing we know is the participa- participation, participation level has declined because people don't want or can't provide two forms of IDs, a passport, a birth certificate. All of these things make it harder to register. And other states have moved towards making it easy where all you need is a driver's license from the state in order to register to vote in that state. But when we take a look at what's been done and what has been the resulting effect, has in-office voting increased voter participation in those states that the good author had mentioned? I was, I was kind of curious if there were any statistics in the research which said that these communities, these states allow for in-house voting or in-office voting thirty days before an election or whatever days that they decided. Has it increased their voter participation level? Is that what we can attribute? Or are we doing just this purely for convenience? If it is purely for convenience, I certainly support it. But I also think we should make it a little bit more convenient because if it's only limited to the commission's regular office hours, the majority of the people are also working those regular office hours. So maybe during that thirty-day period, we should consider requiring the Election Commission to do one of two things, open an hour earlier or stay, stay open a, an hour later or open on a Saturday. But only during that, when you begin allowing for early voting, basically, in office, shouldn't we make it more convenient by allowing it so that those people that are getting off work at five o'clock and decide they want to vote can go into the office and vote rather than having to wait the next day or take some time off from the, from the regular workday or wait till a day off? And how many people have a day off in the middle of the week? So if we're going to make it more convenient, shouldn't we think about making it more convenient for everyone? And shouldn't we, just for that thirty-day period, extend the hours of the commission, either one hour earlier or one hour later or both, and a Saturday? Something so that the people can come in truly at their convenience, cast a ballot because they want to exercise good citizenship. So I'm kind of trying to decide whether or not I want to introduce that amendment and call for a brief recess, but, um, maybe I can discuss it with the author and if he has no objections, maybe we can craft something. So I'd beg your indulgence, Mr. Speaker, to just recess for a short, uh, time to just discuss this, if you don't mind.
Well, yeah, I don't mind.
Thank you very much.
Senator Ben Pingelinen, on bill number forty-one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, the amendment should have been passed out. Uh, the amendment I'm proposing is to add a new section E on page five to read, uh, E, "The Election Commission shall develop, implement and publish extended office hours during the weekday and additional hours on the weekend during the thirty-day early voting period to further accommodate the voting public."
Okay, on that amendment. Any objection? No objections, so ordered. Senator Respechio on the Palacios amendment.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Speaker. Uh, Ms. Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill, um, basically because it, um, would make, uh, any, uh, resources available and the focus for the people to vote as early as possible. And I want to commend, uh, the, um, mover of this bill because, as you know, every time you do something to, um, preserve democracy, it's an absolute, um, win all around. Uh, I understand that, uh, this bill would provide for, uh, provisions for early voting and, um, maybe if the author would yield, I'm wondering if it's possible, uh, to extend this concept to those who are all, uh, homebound or are, or are absentee type, um, voting. I'm, I'm, I know he's, um, contacted somebody, uh, to ask the, uh, timeline of when an individual is ready to vote through the homebound process or at what point the absentee mechanism, um, kicks in. So I'd like the, um, individual to yield to a question.
Will you hear, Senator Palacios?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just spoke with the staff at the Election Commission and, yes, they do provide accommodation to, uh, uh, homebound, uh, voters. But the schedule is, of course, within the thirty days and, uh, obviously, your request would have to come into them, either that or they have a listing. But they, they do that for the primary and on the general election. They, they do it now. But as to any particular day, uh, I guess they have, they have a thirty-day period to make arrangement for that, but they, they do that now. They do accommodate, they, their staff go out on, on a scheduled dates and, and meet with the, uh, homebound, uh, voters and have them vote.
But they, but, Ms. Speaker, but then they do that only within the thirty-day period? The thirty days prior to the primary or general election?
Uh, yes, yes, because...
They only have a thirty-day window?
They, they still have the thirty-day window for early voting, but in this case, because they cannot go down, there's a staff, but I guess a couple of them would go out actually and do that. They're doing that now.
But this bill, and thank you for that, Senator Palacios, this bill would make voting available, uh, immediately upon the completion of the printing of the official ballots, uh, not, but not more than thirty days. So this bill, uh, if we extend it to homebound and absentee type, uh, voters, it'll certainly provide more time, uh, to go out, have the election commission go out and, uh, have these people who are homebound, uh, participate on the election or especially give more time, uh, to those individuals who are off island. So this would provide more than thirty days if this bill passes. Cause, how?
Uh, no, I think, uh...
Oh, so it's the same timeline then?
It's the same timeline.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
Line twenty, page three, none more than thirty days.
Oh, okay, I thought it was like, could be more than thirty days. Oh, okay, I thought it was like, could be more than thirty days.
The same timeline.
So I guess then that my concern is addressed, um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, uh, okay, on the, uh, on bill number forty-one as amended by Senator Pangolinen. Any objection placing in third reading? No objection, so ordered. Uh, Senator Ben, can you make a motion on bill number forty-seventy-eight?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, bill number seventy-eight as substituted, an act to add a new sec- subsection thirty-three forty-seven to Article Three of Chapter Three Title Six, Guam Code annotated, relative to reading, writing, or sending electronic messages while operating a moving motor vehicle prescribing penalties and providing for an effective date, uh, be placed in the, as substituted, be placed in the third reading file.
Okay, on the motion to accept, without objection, so ordered. Now, on the pla- per- on the motion to place it in third reading.
The motion is to place in third reading, Mr. Speaker.
Right. Without objection, then, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, to place bill ninety-two LS as introduced, uh, on third reading.
Okay, on the, on the motion to place number ninety-two LS in third reading, on that motion, Senator Wampat.
Uh, m- m- Mr. Speaker, um, wh- what this actually would do is, is, it's that it would allow, uh, the, the Guam Fire Department, uh, to basically hire back, um, on a needs basis, and these are to, to meet the needs of the, the department as a result of its own active permanent, uh, employees who are, uh, deployed, uh, for, for the military. And what this would do also at the same time is that it would help them to continue to provide the services, uh, needed. And it is not basically going, and it's, and it's to hire back retired, uh, firefighters. And it, we're not talking about an exorbitant amount because, amount, because for one, these are individuals who will be hired, of course, at a fire service specialist and below and only at step one. Uh, it, it, these individuals are retired. Uh, these individuals have been trained already, uh, so it's not as if though you're going out hiring anybody, so, uh, I, and, and, and the best part of it, of course, is that these individuals may continue to receive their retirement benefits, so. I ask that my colleagues support this.
Okay, on the motion, uh, to place bill number ninety-two in third reading. You have that motion, Senator Ben Pangolinen.
Mr. Speaker, I just, um, in reading the bill, I, I certainly support it, but I'm just supporting it, um, with the assumption, I guess, that the firefighter, um, is physically fit, um, emotionally equipped, uh, to be able to perform the position, uh, because this does not, I mean, this could, um, it just doesn't set those criteria. I think in the budget bill that we had that allowed the firefighters to return, uh, into, there was a, another provision, I think, in the budget bill, if I remember correctly, that allowed retired firefighters to be re-employed when the need arises. But I think in that section of that bill, we set up criteria in terms of their ability to meet the requirements of the position. So I'm just assuming that that's what's going to occur here, uh, and, and support the bill.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this provision is the same as what now exists for the police department for the Department of Corrections. And I think the, the previous speaker on this, I think it says here, if you start on line nine, it says here that retired firefighters hired under this section shall first meet requirements, except for written examination, for the positions for which they are being considered. So that means everything, every requirement that's, except the written part, uh, physically fit and, and those things, physical examination, uh, should first be met. And that, except for the written part, and I think this was extensively debated, uh, when it first came up for the corrections under the police, is that all, all, all the other requirements would have to be met except for the written exam. So, uh, uh, again, this is, uh, it, it, it provides for that, just to make sure that they, they fit for the position for which they, they are being, uh, considered. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the motion to place bill ninety-two in third reading. Okay, Senator Wampat, you're the last, uh, speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted, basically, to also let my colleagues know that at the time when we had introduced this, uh, there were actually twenty-one firefighters who were deployed and today they're actually up to twenty-seven. So there really is a, a need, you know, to, um, to address some of their needs and provide the services to the people. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the motion. Any objection? Without objections, so ordered. Uh, we'll recess until nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Any objection to that? Okay, so ordered.